Good evening and welcome to the September 3, 2025 Select Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:07. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live via W A C A T V and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom Video Conference Platform. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. In that event of this disruption, broadcasting will continue on W A C A T V and livestreamed on Facebook. The meeting has been called to order. First, part of the business is citizens' participation. So if anybody willing to do or have anything you would like to say, please step up to the podium. Please identify yourself and you're on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mark. Some people say I don't have to deuce myself, but I will anyways. Mark, this is only one, 19 Main Street. I have two things. First, I'd like to ask the chairman to the town manager, since I was here last, the Mill Building Project, am I sending a letter to Senator Spilker and the response at Town Hall? God, I know this on the agenda, this is gonna be talked on a little bit. So that, does that have, maybe, maybe not from that letter? I have a little thinking about what's going on.
Want to respond to that?
Mark, actually, I don't have too much in the way of updates on 10 to 60. I got, I got more on the others.
Okay. Then it's still, you had that letter, okay. Second thing, the Comprehensive Plan forums. Through the chairman, I'd like to say thank you to Yolanda, perfect forum host, opened up, everything was transparent, very well explained and knowledgeable, and let the people, let the people speak and understand what was going on. You did a great job. You still got now two more to go.
Thank you, Mark. It's been, it's, it's actually been fun doing them, so thank you for that.
And it shows on the camera and the people here and on the Zoom, like I was, they were, they were fully vetted and talked, which some places don't have to do that, only give a certain amount of time. This was the time that you gave the people each time. Well, thank you and thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kendall, Six Rebenaker. Obviously, I'm here for something later on, but I did want to take this opportunity why I'm here to acknowledge the group effort that on our opening day at Mendez, we all now know the eventful day that was, unfortunate incident, but, you know, everybody saw it on the news, the news cameras and everybody were there looking for some juicy story and really what they came away with was how well we all function together. That, so I just want to publicly thank the police, fire, EMS, and of course, the school staff who just 100% was professional, cared for all the students and staff without, you know, didn't let the distraction of the news, media and everything. And like I said, they, they came looking for one story and what I took away is just we should all be, how proud we should be of the collaboration of all our groups. So just thank you to everybody involved in that.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody want to comment on that or you good?
I just want to say it was for, you know, not having kids in the schools and, you know, we, we were hearing the helicopters overhead, but then over the weekend, I ran into one of the staff of the Mendez Building and she said that it, it was worse than what we had originally thought because the nurse was actually allergic to bees and wasps, so couldn't help, but people jumped in and what she was telling me, it was just, but as Paul said, everyone jumped in and it was taken care of and coordinated and no one, they said thankfully, not a single one of the students that was stung was allergic. No Epi pens had to be used or anything, you know, finding them in their hair, it was just so, yeah, it was an interesting way to start the school year.
It certainly was. Bees do seem to attract a lot of news attention.
Well, and you, well, and they weren't bees, they were actually wasps or some kind of.
Round wasps.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember at Montenegro Square, you got those.
Yes, yeah, there's some wasps there as well.
Or are you seeing that wasps from Ashland tend to specifically attract a lot of media attention? That's, I think.
And then I was gonna say, then we've got 40 bees.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, my word. So.
At least we're all still laughing, so.
Are you trying to trump my rumble seat joke?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't work.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. That was, I was gonna put that on my board report, but we don't have to do that now, so we'll save ourselves some time. Next on the agenda, we have 7:10 appointment and running a little late, so I apologize to discuss the appointment of Gene Horner to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. And I see Roberta here and I believe this is Gene as well, so if you'd like, yeah, you can go up with Roberta if you would like, please. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here. Thank you very much for your time. We are, the Open Space and Recreation Committee is recommending that Gene Horner be appointed to the final vacancy on our committee, which will give us a full complement of members. So we're really happy about that. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about our, why we're recommending her and then let Gene talk about her background and answer any questions that you might have. She's been very engaged with our committee for about the last four months. When someone expresses an interest in joining the Open Space and Recreation Committee, we have a meeting with them, we invite them to continue to come to our committee meetings so that they can make an informed choice about whether this is a group they really want to work with and spend time with and that this is work they really want to be able to, they really want to do. So it's good for us to be able to check out candidates and it's good for the candidates to be able to check us out and it's a chance for us to see how committed someone really is because a lot of the talent bank forms that you get when you invite somebody, they've checked off six or seven committees and you don't really know where their interests are until they have to step up and make a commitment to participate with you before you'll recommend them. So since about April, Gina's been coming to our monthly committee meetings. She came to the Open Space and Recreation Forums. She helped staff our table at the farmer's market in June when the farmer's market began. She's also shown interest in the open space aspects of the comprehensive plan and the whole comprehensive plan by going to those forums as well. So she's shown a real commitment and engagement and enthusiasm for our work and for the goals of the Open Space and Recreation Committee for the town. So we are really pleased to recommend her to the Select Board as a candidate to fill our final vacancy.
Thank you. Good evening.
Basically, I think, I've lived in Ashland for like over, well, 40 years. And I think one of the things that when we originally moved to Ashland, the things that I liked about it is that there was open space and when I live on Cross Street, so there was like nobody on Cross Street at that point. So I have seen the open spaces there diminish a little, but I really like the fact that the towns kind of maintain the open space, the town forests have added to that, the River Walk. And then when I retired about, it's been about almost two years ago, one of the things that I thought, well, I'd always been interested in like volunteering and stuff anyway. When my kids were little, I helped out with like soccer, the town soccer stuff, even though I didn't know a lot about soccer at the time, but I learned and kept one step ahead. But I think, like I say, one of the things I've always enjoyed is being outdoors and the importance of that. I worked in Boston for basically 43 years as a psychiatrist. So I got really tired of the commute, but it was always nice to get back to here where there was some green space. And then one of the things that I did, I said, well, now that I'm retired, I'm gonna see if I can do the Ashland Citizens Academy. Shout out to that. And I think as I learned that and learned a little bit more about all the different committees and things like that, I thought open space would be probably, you know, something that I would be interested in. So I kind of figured out, you know, did the talent bank forum and stuff like that. So I just feel like it's been great being involved with this group of people. I mean, their, their vision, their interest really aligned with me and one of the things that I've also learned about is like, you know, even on the committee, you can then sort of get involved with the town forest and the Charles River Trail Group. I mean, all of those things I would love to do because we really, we like to bike ride and stuff too. And the fact in terms of like, kind of keeping it and improve, continuing to sort of improve kind of open space and green space in Ashland. Again, I, I was very impressed also about the comprehensive plan. I just, I just said to Roberta, I says, wow, I took a look at the draft last week and I'm like, what a lot of work, but really need to sort of see the vision that the, that people have for the town. So it'd be kind of, it'd be nice to really be involved with that and continuing to kind of make that happen, so.
Nice. I'll open to the board, any questions?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for stepping up to volunteer to do this, Gene. One thing that caught my ear and reading through your materials and hearing from Roberta is that you've demonstrated commitment to this committee before you've, you know, formally decided to, to apply and I think that's really important. You've got an understanding of what it would take. You're very committed to the mission of the committee and you've demonstrated not just interest, but willingness to roll up your sleeves and get to work before you even, you were even appointed, so.
Well, again, I think that in some ways, I think that was a great idea to say, come to the meetings, see what it's about, see what it's like. So I thought that was actually really helpful for me as well.
That's fantastic to hear and in fact, will be part of our later discussion, that's part of the recommendations that we heard from a lot of our committee chairs over the past few months about improving the committee experience recruitment and other, and for recruitment and retention, so. So yes, well, thank you.
Thank you. Are we good? Any comments, questions? No? Are you gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. I move that we appoint Gene Horn to the Open Space and Recreation Committee with a term to expire. That part I didn't see. Do we know what the term should be?
I do not.
I don't know if it's one year or three, if it's, it's either 8/31/26 or 8/31/28, one year or three years. It's not on the agenda, I just looked.
It's not on the agenda. I don't see it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not in the backup either.
Just want to check in real quick. Roberta, do you remember which seat it is?
No, because we waited to appoint.
Until after the.
You'll have to.
Gotcha.
Yeah, full term. Susan?
Okay.
I was assuming it was three.
Is it?
Could be 28?
2020, okay. With, with a, a term to expire, 8/31/2028, three years.
Second, thank you. All those in favor of appointing Gene to that, to that committee?
Aye.
Aye. That's five zero. Congratulations.
And thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank for your volunteering. It's very nice.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you. All right. It's nice to have somebody that's willing to take the interest and take that stuff and continue, which is always a nice thing. Okay, next on our agenda is old and new business and special town meeting warrant articles. They do by Saturday, September 27, 2025. So turn this over to Catherine or turn it, okay.
Yeah, Catherine. I, I don't know how much of an update we have. Catherine?
Yes, so we don't have too much of an update. It's sort of the same as last time, so we need all warrant articles to my attention, to my email by Saturday, September 27th. And then the next date would be the official closing of the warrant, which would be October 16th.
Okay. Tell me how many articles do we, are we looking at now? And, and any new additions?
No, no changes.
No changes, okay. Good. Very good. Okay, thank you. Update on Ashland Day and the Select Board's participation, so I'll turn that over to either Brandy, Claudia, or Yolanda. All, all, all three of you.
So just a real quick update on what we've been up to with, with Ashland Day, which will be Saturday, October 4th at Stone Park from 11 to 4, with a rain date of the, the 5th, on Sunday, the 5th. So when we started this about a month ago, we put out the request for volunteers and we were kind of, we, I mean, it's, the support from the community has been pretty, pretty amazing in a couple ways. One, the volunteers and then also we had needed to raise the funds for Ashland Day pretty quickly. And we did that through a couple of different ways. One through the businesses who have offered to sponsor us and the other part was asking individuals for donations as well. And so in the, the less than three weeks since we first put out the call, we hit our fundraising numbers, we're still waiting on some checks, so we have some donations that we're still waiting to come in, but we have commitments for, for the $15,000, which is amazing. So, and part of that is also the Select Board had voted to, to donate $1,500 towards Ashland Day this year. And as part of that, the reason I really wanted this on the, the, the agenda was to talk about how we as a board may want to participate because one of the things that we did with the sponsorship levels is anyone who gives $1,000 or more has their name associated with a, with an attraction or something like that and also has the ability to have a booth. And so it's more like, the question is, do we want to host a booth? Do we want to try to partner with any other committees to host a booth? And what would that look like? Because we do need to commit to a, if we're going to have a booth, we have to commit by the 12th. We're trying to, everything is a very compressed timeframe, so that was throwing it out to the board.
So, if I may, just quickly, I know you're looking for volunteers to help out on the day, so I don't know if that's something that you'd rather have us do that or man a booth and just stand there and not, if, if you understand, I, I think our services would be better being out in the field to help out that way than manning a booth.
I would, I would agree with Joe on that. I think, you know, the only thing I would say is if a booth could, you know, if we get a booth and we want to offer it to the school committee or some other committee so that they could have a booth or, you know, make it a town booth kind of thing.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, say whatever, whatever committees want to be there and have them commit people to participate. But to Joe's point, I mean, I know I'm gonna be helping, you know, with the, you know, stuff on the stage and people are gonna be helping direct traffic and whatever we're gonna be doing, so.
And what we're asking, what we're asking groups and, and folks who are doing a booth is to provide some sort of activity or game or something.
Yeah.
And so that, that was going to be the question, like, if we wanted to do like a town, you know, and partner with other committees.
Committees.
We could definitely do that. It's just a question of, you know, we would, you know, to Joe's point, do we want to just all be there in support of the, of the day and?
I would, some people that, you know, be watching the rides, I don't know how you worked it out with them, but, you know, monitor the rides and stuff, some people need breaks. If you're selling tickets, people that are selling tickets at a booth location, they may want to take a, you know, five minute water break or 10, 10 minute break, you know, to continue doing what they need to do. And we could fill in that, that type of thing, just, just to be there to give people a rest, give them, you know, give them time to rest up and then they can go right back to doing what they were doing.
Could we, could we ask, could we, could we ask the, put a question out to the boards and committees that we port, appoint to ask if there's any interest in them, you know, in various boards and committees taking different shifts to promote their boards and committees and possibly recruit for any kind of open spaces, any kind of open seats if, if that's the situation. You know, I think if you're talking about an interactive activity, maybe there could be like a quick five question trivia game about what the boards and committees are and what they do that anybody could run. But like, I just, I, I just don't want, you sparked that idea of making that open to folks. If we could ask them if there's any interest, if there's no interest, then, you know, I don't think having a booth makes sense, but if other boards and committees, it might be a good resource, just to kind of showcase volunteer opportunities and volunteer recruitment for, for stuff that here in town.
But it also promotes the different organizations and groups within the, in the government that we have.
Correct.
A lot of these committees don't get the, the advertisement like others do, so this is a time for them to promote who they are, what they are and what they do.
Absolutely.
You know, so as they walk, as people are walking by them, oh, what are you doing? Then they have the display and it's explained to them. And that's how you generate a part, a potential interest in joining that committee.
Absolutely. And, you know, we could also get people to sign up if they're interested, you know, for, we can let them know about Citizens Academy. We, it could just be a volunteer clearinghouse space.
Yeah.
But we should ask if people, you know, if there's no interest in it, if people can't do it, then we won't do it, but I'd love to have them have the opportunity.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's, I think that is good. We can, we can kind of couch it as, as like a, a group, a group booth. I know at one point we were kind of joking around with the idea of like, you know, like pie in the face, like, you know, you could throw a pie at an elected official.
Use your ticket to throw a pie.
Raise some good cash.
I, I do hear that banana cream is excellent for your pores. That may or may not be true. I'm a medical doctor, but.
But the point, but, but, but maybe, maybe there would be, if we wanted to say, do something like that and we had a few other boards that would want to, you know, put their, put their faces on the line.
Yeah.
You know, that could be, I could, I'm just throwing it out there. Well, no, I'm looking at you. Looking at you.
You could sub.
I'll volunteer. If, if other, if other people do it, I'll do it. I'm serious.
Yeah.
Not all afternoon, but.
You have like a schedule.
A schedule, yeah.
If there's other, if there's other groups that would be willing to do it, you know.
Yeah, put that out there too.
Yeah.
I, I feel that my relatives would probably buy up all the tickets, but I'll still put my name and hat to volunteer for it.
It'll, it'll mean fireworks for the 40th.
Well, you're gonna generate 25 grand. Wow, that, that'd be awesome.
Well, I guess, I guess one thing at a time, one pie at a time.
One pie at a time.
So what I'm hearing is definitely a booth. I think there's interest in the pie thing.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's see if we can get on.
It's the banana cream that really put me over the top.
The banana cream did it.
So let's see if we can.
You know what was really a big hit about four or five years ago was a pie eating contest.
See, then I would have to get the board a hell of a involved.
Why?
The pies are all made, they're, they're pre-made.
I'm with you.
You buy them from tabletop and it's one of those things.
Maybe at the 40th.
Yeah.
Pie eating contest for the 40th.
Yeah.
Ashland Day.
We could do a hot dog eating contest.
Yeah.
With his name from New Jersey.
Oh, man. Oh, man.
Anyway.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for the update.
I just want to speak to that for a second. I just, first of all, you know, I really do want to echo Brandy's thank you to the community. It, it's really been amazing to watch, you know, so many people come forward, individuals and businesses to support this event. And then, you know, one thing that I've said to several people now is, and Joe, I want you to hear this, the reason that we've been able to be successful in such a relatively short period of time, I think it raising the, the money is because I'm just really good looking. No.
I thought this was going one direction.
Not the direction you expected.
See what she did there?
No. Really, Joe, honestly, now, this is from the heart. The reason is because you and others have created something in these years that the community loved and they didn't want to see it go away. And so that, this is really testimony to what a wonderful event you've created. And again, I know it wasn't you single-handedly, but, but certainly you've been a significant force in that. And, and, and I just, you know, have to just tip my hat.
No, thanks.
Because certainly it's.
Thank you from, from everybody that was involved over the years. And one of the things we're thinking of doing for next year, when the original committee gets back together, is call back all the folks that are, that are still around with us. They'll be part of a, the fanfare of giving us our last hurrah type of deal and try to get the, the original members, though many of them have gone from us, but there's still quite a few still around and maybe just get them all together and get recognition and get a picture of all of us together at one time.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Which would be a pretty good idea. Special moment, you know, so that's what we're thinking about doing.
All right, well, thank you.
Which is nice. But thank you for those, those kind words and thank you for the enthusiasm that you guys created. And I saw that, that first meeting and it was pretty awesome. Like I said, I got a little emotional because it brought back 1986 all over again. It was something, so, which is great. So thank you for that update and let's hope we have good weather. That's, I know, really, keep knocking, keep knocking. I keep printing the Barbie Con Friday, no more rain, no more rain, chief rain dance. All right, so we're moving on. Our report and discuss incoming emails to the Select Board and how to handle them. I thought we had actually.
I thought we did this last time.
So I think, I think it kind of got, I, I don't think it kind of was, I, I think when we drafted it, it kind of wasn't the right wording for it, but we had talked about having a standing meeting or a standing agenda item where we talked about communications and that's more of what I was trying to.
So this would be an agenda item.
An agenda item that we discuss, like the incoming emails and how we've responded to them. That's, that was, sorry, and I, I'm, I apologize, I didn't really go through the, the agenda quite as.
Initially, what we said, what was, what was agreed upon was that I would draft a letter, send a letter off to them, but I would individually provide you those, those emails. Now, do you want that?
No, I don't think we said you'd provide it to us individually. I think what was said was that you would reply.
Yeah.
And that as part of our packet.
Packet, I would.
The response would be in the packet as, these are the things that I've responded to.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Cause I have two that I could have put in probably today, but I didn't do that because I wasn't sure how I'm gonna handle that.
And, and I would say it either becomes the first item under old and new business or we do it just before consent or just after consent before town managers report, so that it's always in the same place.
Always in the same place.
One of the two.
All right, that's fine. We can, we can do that at our next agenda setting meeting. Good, okay, thank you. Next, update on the Dragonfly Street Fair, which is Saturday, September 27th from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's always a, a nice take. Again, hopefully the weather holds out for us and, Mike, do you have an update on that for us with respect to that?
Other than just, you know, planning is still underway and I know there's been some discussion about road closures and everything and.
I got an email today with respect to that saying that Doug was good with what, he had some concerns at first, but I guess they worked them out at today's meeting.
The roadway traffic.
The roadway traffic safety committee meeting, okay, yeah.
So, so it's, basically, we're just in the, the final stages and just tweaking, tweaking some logistics and plans, but we're really looking forward to a, to a good day, a good event.
Cool.
I'm sure there's something posted on the website that details it a little bit, if somebody wanted to.
Check it out.
Check it out and see what it's, what it's about or.
Yeah. I believe there's, I, I did go on the site and I saw, I saw the roadmap that they had with the lines and arrows directing where the traffic would be going to and stuff. And I guess that was a concern, especially with the tractor trailer traffic that sometimes comes through that, in that area on whatever given day, so. But I guess it was worked out and we're, we're happy with it. As long as Doug is happy, then we're all happy. So, which is good. Okay.
I think we skipped over item D.
Did I?
Yeah, the planning board thing.
Catherine, there's someone in the ma, in the waiting room.
Oh, they're right, there is. I'm sorry, sorry about that. Okay, important discussion, how to handle that. I don't even have that on my thing.
What is it? Isn't it the 40 bees next?
No, discuss date for a joint meeting with the planning board to fill vacancies. No, discuss date for a joint meeting with the planning board to fill vacancies. D, potential date 9/11.
Okay, well, take a look at that. And that's the one I just printed out.
I don't have that either.
I don't have that.
This was in the, this was in the packet.
This was the only agenda that, that came with all the information.
I don't have it either.
Item D on the mine is update on the Dragonfly. That, I was going right down.
So this basically, you had talked to, so it's, discuss a date for a joint meeting with the planning board. They have two vacancies. I don't know, did you end up talking to Trish?
I talked to Trish. I talked to Trish Friday night over at, regarding Ashland After Dark.
Is this regarding the comprehensive plan?
No, this is actually their board. So Camillo moved out of town.
Right.
So resigned. And they also have an associate member slot open. And because they have, they have so much that's going on, they're looking to, to fill those vacancies pretty quickly, and asked if we might be available, at least a quorum of us might be available to go to their, their meeting on the 11th, which is a week from tomorrow.
Week from tomorrow, right.
It's like Thursday, and I'm like, oh, it's tomorrow, to join them at the front end of their meeting for a few minutes to interview and.
And vote.
Vote.
To fill those slots, because they're, they're under the gun. And we have done that before in the past, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I may not be able to be there for that. I, I, there's a possibility that I could be, but I, right now, I couldn't.
Okay. Could you be, be a hybrid, or?
I can be there. I can, I can do September 11th.
At least if we have a quorum. And I, I know I'm available.
You're available. Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. That gives us a quorum.
Will we be at the beginning of their agenda?
I think so.
I asked, I asked Trish that, that, to do, you know, not to put us back in.
Seven.
7:15.
Seven fifteen.
7:15. Are, are you able to be there, Michael? Okay, all right, so we had definitely more than a quorum. We have a quorum. Good. All right. So I'll, I'll, if she's listening, Paul, you can pass that information on that, we'll be there on the, the 11th. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. And I'm sorry I didn't have that on my, and this was the one that I printed out. I'm sorry, folks.
Yeah, it wasn't on the one that I pulled down from the shared drive.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Anthony Henderson. I see, I, I'm looking up on the board, and I see an, an Anthony Henderson. Mr. Henderson, if you can, yourself? You had your hand raised, so I'm wondering if you have a question regarding that. Hello? Okay, well, see, we, we do look at the board. All righty. All right, so we will continue. Now, the next item that I have on the is discuss 40B projects. Is that what you have on yours? I just want to make sure we're back, we're back to normal again. Okay, we're back to normal again. Okay, we're back in. Okay. Go ahead. You're, you're, you're on board.
I will start off with 10 to 60 Main Street. So I did hear back from the EPA, and although we haven't affirmed everything up as, in terms of whether they would be able to be there virtually or in person, but they do plan on being at the Septem, at the next ZBA meeting to answer any questions.
The next Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay.
September 9th. The EPA.
EPA.
Yeah, Lisa threw it from the EPA. You know, to answer any questions regarding, you know, the plume and Nyanza. She would not necessarily be in a space to speak explicitly or as, as detailed as the applicant's LSP, George Campbell, would be on the, you know, the methods and the methodology that they are planning on using to, you know, protect and mitigate any kind of circumstances. But she can at least give an overview of the plume, what kind of dangers it, it could potentially present, and what they're recommending in terms of mitigation factors.
Okay.
So thankful for her to, to be able to do, to do that. Those of you that were at the high school back in 2020, when we discussed that, the remedy, what they, what they termed the final remedy for the OU2 operable unit, unit two, which is the plume, Lisa is the one from the EPA that was there and spoke and detailed everything. So just to give you a little idea of, reminder of who she is. It's 10 to 60 Main Street, so.
That's on the ninth, right?
Correct. 61 Waverly Street. I know Jasmine was waiting for an extension letter from the applicant, because currently that is scheduled to close on September 21st. Our, if you recall, we had kind of a, a citizen architect team, if you will, that worked on the 10 to 60 project, and they have been graciously willing to work on the Waverly Street project as well. And so we're set, setting up a meeting, trying to figure that out, trying to, to start that process off. So they have, you know, the architectural drawings and are reviewing those. And then 55 West Union Street, the Conservation Commission did send over a comment letter to the ZBA regarding that project. Have you had a chance to look at that? Or have you, have you seen that? I believe it's on the website. If not, I can make sure you get a copy.
I have not.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
And then another, another item related to the 40Bs here was how the projects affect our current housing plan. And I just, I basically made an assumption that that is with relation to our affordable housing and our housing production plan and how it interacts with that. And so I did a little bit of calculations related to this. So, you know, we have, as of the 2020 census, we had 7,456 housing units. Now, if you looked at the units that had already been built, and if you add on 100 Chestnut Street, the potential units at 501 Pond Street, and then the Arbella at Ashland Project, those, if you add all of those up with the units that we have, that brings us up to 753 affordable units. That would count as 753 affordable units in total in the town, which would put us barely over 10%. So we would be slightly over our 10% according to the 2020 census without any of the 40B projects. If the 40B projects move forward as they're currently, basically, as, as they have currently been configured, if you will, that would add an additional 592 units onto our affordable housing inventory, which would bring our total number of affordable units to 1,345 affordable units, which would equate to 18% of our housing stock. So, and just as a reminder, every 10 years, every decennial census, that's when they determine what your total housing unit number is. So there would be quite a buffer there, assuming the state didn't change, number one, assuming the state did not change the requirements where the numbers change. And, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of building that happened here in town of multifamily units that did not have an affordable component to it. So.
So one question for you. Sorry. The, so when the first, the first of the 40Bs get permitted, so, which looks like it's probably going to be Waverly, correct? We think that'll be probably the first one that has, but when I say permitted, that will be the first one with the hearing closed, and then they have to, they have to draft a decision and all that. Assuming, and I'm making an assumption, assuming that goes through and that gets permitted, would we hit, would we be able to be eligible for safe harbor when that gets permitted? Well, no, I know that, but I'm just saying, I want, I want to close, I want to close the door.
I believe we'd have to do an update to the housing production plan to include those numbers, is my understanding.
Yeah, I believe our current housing production plan is good until May of 2026. I need to double-check that.
Okay.
That makes sense, because we finished it in 20, in January of 2020.
21, 2021.
Was it 2021?
Yeah.
So 2026, it's a five-year.
So as long as one got permitted before then.
Okay.
And it had a comprehensive, and I believe the rule is just a comprehensive permit issued. Then, yes, that would, and it was done before May of 2026, we would be in safe harbor. And with any of these projects, it would be for a two-year period. Unless that project didn't get built after a year had gone by, then they drop off, similar to what happened with Arbella.
Like UGC.
Does that affect 501 Pond, seeing that they haven't built anything yet, and it's been almost a year? How does that, does that affect that as well?
So 50, in, it affected in what way?
In the, the fact that it hasn't been built yet?
Right. That's, it not getting built was one of the reasons we went out of safe harbor.
Right.
Which is why we have some of these, between that and UGC, which is why we went into, why we had 40B projects.
Correct. But had, have the permits been already issued for that to be done?
For 501 Pond.
So that's in the pipeline, so we do, we can.
So we can't count that. Yeah.
So, Michael, I, if you're done with updates there on that, I have a few questions related initially, I guess, to 10 to 60 Main.
Can I ask some generic questions related to affordable that, that ties into that, if you don't mind?
You had your hand raised, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Not maybe for tonight, but there's been discussion that there are some affordable units. They're going to be losing their affordability restrictions. Are we working on that, and what can we do to make sure they keep their affordability restrictions?
I know that Steve Greenberg was looking into that for us.
Okay.
Except that, and some of those units have to deal with.
Right.
Except there.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, pull it a little closer, Joe.
I may bite into it. So I know that, we're, we're talking about the Galanyway properties.
I don't know which ones. All I know is I've heard conversation that some of them are going to be dropping off, that we need to figure what we can do.
And I know that he was in, in contact with Rico from HDCD with respect to that, and how we can continue keeping them on our side of the ledger instead of losing them and dropping them off.
Yeah.
And we haven't heard back yet from, from her, so.
Okay.
Waiting to hear back. And unfortunately, with Steve being out of the, out of the loop for a while, we'll have to, maybe Dave Rosenblum step up and.
Okay.
And check, and check that for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And then the second thing related to, you were saying that the developer for Waverly Street has to ask for an extension. If we, if they don't ask and we don't give it to them, does that mean our time to ask, ask questions is up, and then the ZBA has to do their deliberation and give them their conditions before they would give them a permit? Is that the next process?
Yeah, so it, it's a little bit of the other way around.
Okay.
We're, we're hoping to get the extension. We've asked for the extension.
Okay.
And hoping that the developer agrees. Because you're right, if, if we do not get an extension, then the date for the hearing has to close on September 21st, or the hearing has to close on September 21st.
Okay. And we've been getting a lot of emails, I'm sure you've all seen them, from the gentleman who lives there, and I have not had the opportunity to follow that one as closely. Do we know, has any, has any discussion with the developer been had about sidewalks or improving the roadway, or?
There will be.
Okay. Because I'm like, this is, to me, this is an opportunity to say, hey.
Yeah, absolutely.
Put on, put sidewalks in on 135, because it'll, you know, it'll improve the quality of life for your residents.
Yeah, that's been a bone of contention with respect to the roadway traffic safety committee.
Right.
Especially in that area. And we've had that discussion several times. Claudia, I think you sat in on one of those meetings with us with respect to that. So, yeah, so it's definitely on a radar. It's definitely not going to get fallen through the cracks on this one.
Great. Thank you.
And my understanding, not directly from the applicant, but through some of our staff, is that there, there's an openness by the applicant to look at, at doing a sidewalk.
That's what people have said, that they're, they're looking to work with us, so, okay.
I think, you know, it depends on how, how long a sidewalk we're talking about. You know, I think probably from the Public Safety Building to the Framingham Line is, is not going to, not going to be received very well. But at, by the same, on the flip side, you know, I think one that's just the length of the development is not going to be sufficiently there.
Well, that's not worth it, right? If, if you're going to put in a sidewalk, it has to connect to other sidewalks.
Right.
To make it beneficial.
And there's no, there's no other sidewalk on 135 at that location at all.
Anywhere from the town, from Ashland Town Line, right?
So if the developer isn't willing to do that, you know, go to the town line in Framingham, which there are no sidewalks on that portion of the road in Framingham, off of their Waverly Street, then maybe make it up to the Hindu Temple driveway, where a lot of people, you know, walk into that location. That may be a, that may be a, a counteroffer at some point. Who knows? But I'm just saying it would be.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Go ahead, Claudia.
10 to 60 Main, the last hearing, there was conversation, he was going to ask for an extension for that project. Michael, do you know if that's happened?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
So he, there were two things that were going to happen. He was going to ask for an extension, and then he was in favor, and Mr. Winter sort of agreed to it at that point. He was in favor of leaving the hearing open. So you don't know anything about how that's?
I do not, no.
We've also asked about, he had, very early on, had asked, had said he would do a balloon test. Do you know if there's any movement there?
No, he has not responded as to whether or not he would be willing to do that. I think the last, the last public exchange, I think, was at, was it at the last ZBA meeting?
No, it was the one before.
And I think one of the ZBA members had, had suggested a rendering.
Yeah.
And I believe that's what.
I don't think a rendering really does it. It's very hard to capture perspective in a rendering. One thing I wondered about, actually, today, I was looking at the church steeple and, and wondering, where, where could, where do you think I could find out how high that is?
We might actually have that. Yeah.
128 Main.
I believe so.
I, I think we do have those, those dimensions.
Because, you know, that's something. I think the, the building, 10 to 60 Main, at its highest point will be just, just shy of 70 feet.
That's correct. Like 16, it's like literally like 69 feet and some change, yeah.
So I think that it, it's important to see more than a rendering. I think that Mr. England, you know, likes to respond to questions with.
I don't know why he's so opposed to having a, a balloon test, because.
It was his, I think I'm pretty sure it was his suggestion very early on.
You know, I remember asking him very early on, and he, he was very resistant to the idea at the time. I think, you know, I was hoping in this last exchange, just because he seemed, last couple of hearings seemed to be a little bit more amenable to some of the requests that we had had, that that would result in an affirmation that he would go ahead and do it. But I have not received that.
And then the other, the other thing was, I know we had talked a little bit about potentially bringing on a lawyer with some, I know that our attorney has some experience with, a significant amount of experience with 40Bs, and that maybe another set of eyes might be helpful. Like, did you have a chance to chat with Lisa about that?
Not again, not, not the second time around. But I also, I also need some, a little clarification with that, because if, if we're looking for something different from legal counsel, then we need to communicate that to legal counsel as well. Because, you know, in talking about another attorney, which, you know, if that's, if that's the direction we need to go in, what are we looking for that attorney to do that we haven't, that we've asked our current attorney to do that's not happening? Is that?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I think that the attraction for some with the other, another attorney, or specifically even one attorney, is that there was a lot of success with some of the waivers, right? And so I think that that was, I don't know if, if, you know, Attorney Winter or if Attorney Mead have had the opportunity to look at that particular case.
Yes, for, for sure. And it's really interesting. I mean, I went, I believe it's Attorney Pucci. I went to his website, and he, he doesn't cite that case. I went to his website and he, he doesn't cite that case as being one of his signature wins. So, because I think what was, so I think the case being made, you know, for Attorney Pucci's, and I want to say this as respectfully as possible, I don't know the man, but, you know, there was a project in Falmouth that I believe the applicant had applied for 900 units, ultimately what was built was 300. I think during the course of looking into that, what was discovered was that.
Right, we know that they couldn't build more than 300.
They couldn't build more than 300.
Right, right.
And I think maybe.
I think we talked about that.
Yeah, I think maybe if, you know, if that, if that got down to like 200 units, you know, compared to the 300 unit max, that might be a win, so that might be why he doesn't have it on, on his website. He might not necessarily think it's a win, the way, you know, some other people were kind of thinking that that's.
You know, one of the concerns that I have with respect to that, but I don't interrupt your, your flow of questioning, is that on the deed, it says there'll be no apartments, no, no living units there, so how is that allowed? If it's in, if it's in, if it's written in the deed?
This is a great question for EPA, because that, that is, that is the EPA use restriction, activity and use limitation. And so, so how, so how does that happen? So when they did the cleanup, back many, many years ago, they only cleaned up to the extent that, that they met the MasDEP standards to allow commercial and residential work to hap, or commercial and residential, or commercial to happen there, excuse me, commercial and industrial is what I meant. If they, if an owner or an applicant wanted to do more, like wanted to do residential, they would have to go in and do more cleanup, do more, or do more type of mitigation efforts. And so what happens is that, so they submit that RAM plan, that's remedial, remedial action plan, that is, that is reviewed, and if the EPA, if it does not meet the standards of the EPA, they're not going to remove that AOL restriction. So the, the risk is on the applicant.
So, so does that mean they're creating a plan to, I mean, we've heard about the barriers and stuff like that, are they planning to do more cleanup before they start doing any construction?
I know I, I used the term cleanup, I went, I meant to say, corrected real quickly, say mitigation, I'm not sure, I don't remember seeing in their remedial action plan where there's an extensive cleanup.
After all this, if the EPA does not like their remediation plan for the barrier and all that, the EPA could say, you can't build here?
That is correct.
When does that happen in the process?
So that happens during the construction process.
During the construction process?
So that means if you walk down the.
Even the testing that they do on the barriers, can't happen until the barrier is in place.
There's the potential that they could start going, they could tear down the buildings, they could do what they're going to do for mediation, and then EPA could say this is not enough and you can't build here?
Correct, but they're having the dialogue ahead of time to make sure that there is, you know, congruence, I guess, is the best word, between what EPA would like.
Bless you.
And then what is being proposed. I think we should look at a belt and suspenders approach and have, as part of the ZBA decision, you know, the required thickness for the vapor barrier and then also the vapor mitigation system.
Because there's different thicknesses.
Correct.
You want to make sure that you have the, you know, I mean, I would think you want the thicker one to, to survive, so that it'll last longer.
Which is why I'm still so interested that the EPA has allowed. Or that the developer has gone this far, I'm like, it says no residential, so then how does, I mean, and I guess that's part of it, I mean, who understands why the, how, why the state does stuff? Like mass housing had this information, that there's a deed restriction for residential, that you, you'd think that they would have said, you know what, go find a better property.
It's very confusing.
And not necessarily logical either.
Yeah.
I mean, I, and I couldn't tell you, I can't, I couldn't tell you specific properties where this has happened before, but I do know Jeff has said like they have encountered this situation before.
Yeah, they've done it before. Yeah.
You know, also, I'm glad, I'm glad this, this came up, I, the applicant did send to Jasmine, I did see a copy of the ma, I know a question was raised about the lifespan of that vapor barrier. And I believe a comment was made that it was 20 years, and the manufacturer states that it's significantly longer than that.
Can I ask? So what is it then?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Because when I, when I, when I researched it, I came up with 20 years too, I mean, obviously I'm just relying on Google for my information, but. And.
Did you have a?
I do have a question, but I'm waiting, I'm waiting, Michael, find the answer, but like, while you're looking for that, I, my other question is like, so presumably, if, if presumably everything goes through and the mitigation is approved by the EPA, when the structure is built, are potential renters required to be informed of the, of the existing issue and mitigation taken before they go into a transaction? And maybe this is a, a question for the EPA, because I don't know what the rules are, but like, you know, even if there's a mitigation in place, like, you know, if, if someone's renting, you know, one of those apartments, like, they, is there a requirement that they're, they are informed that they are, where their location is, as a, as a boom?
I feel pretty confident in saying that there's not a requirement, like, like a statewide law that, that requires that.
Right.
I'm wondering if that's something that could be inserted in the decision?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, people need to make informed choices about.
Especially where they're living and if they're going to be raising children there.
Exactly, you know, as, as, as someone who, who would be, if I were in that part of my life, I would be very, I, I want to know before I, I rent something like that, to know what potential risks could be there, or mitigated risks are there before I rent.
And the other piece, I think, you know, and this is a question for the EPA really, but because it is in a floodplain, and, you know, there's a whole host of issues around flood, it being in a floodplain, but one of them, in my mind, is what does a floodplain, what does a flood do to a barrier? You know, does it impact the lifespan? Does it impact its even ability to perform at that time? You know, where does, what does the water?
Does it, does it affect the integrity of the?
Does the water somehow, and honestly, I don't know, does the water get in anyways, and, and is it able to carry contaminants elsewhere to the properties surrounding it?
And also what happens when there is a flood, like, is there a testing procedure, or is there something that they need to, need to do to make sure that there, there's still integrity there?
Integrity, yeah.
I don't know, like, may, I guess that probably is a question for the EPA?
Yeah, and I think maybe the best thing to do is if you do have these questions, if you could email it to Jasmine and CC, Beth and I on that, we can make sure that Lisa, Lisa threw it from the EPA and can answer those. Regarding the specific question regarding the vapor barrier, so this is from the manufacturer, Jack Condon, so our vapor barrier is having an indefinite life expectancy and come with our life of the building warranty. The main factor that contributes to this life expectancy is that our membranes are made of prime virgin polyolefin resin blends, try saying that five times. This means they contain all of the antioxidants that stop plastic from degrading, as comparison most generic recycled poly sheeting products can start to become brittle and deteriorate underneath a concrete slab in as quickly as two years.
And does that mean it degrades slowly over time? Is there a graph that shows until it, you know, reaches? Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's just a.
Yeah, the, I think those are good questions.
So this week in your newsletter then, because this has been, you know, a big question from the community about having the opportunity to discuss some of the, the, you know, safety concerns around this, would you'll post that in terms of the meeting next Tuesday? And then maybe even offer them the opportunity to submit questions?
Yeah, I want to say we actually did that in the, in the most recent one, yeah.
Yeah, you may, you may have, it kind of rings a bell, but. But I'm not sure, you didn't have a date last time?
I probably did not, no.
So when is that happening, the EPA?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday the ninth, okay.
I just want to capture, make sure I'm capturing a couple of things that we've talked about, just in discussion, that we think should be included in the decision. And so, talking about the EPA's recommendations for the thickness of the vapor barrier, as well as a vapor, what they call the vapor intrusion system. Including the provision about notifying potential renters about the location. Is there anything I missed with regards to being in that decision?
I don't know if I care about the thickness, I only care about how the, what the thickness, how well it.
Performs.
Performs, right? So I guess it'd be more of, of a performance statement.
Okay.
And they should be the ones recommending?
Yeah, I mean, it should come from the EPA, you know, somebody that doesn't have, you know, dog in the game, as they say. Nowadays though, I guess. Everybody has a dog in the game.
Yeah, this is true. And so that was, I don't think I, oh, I did, sorry, okay. Any more, any other questions regarding those?
Are we good on the, on the 40Bs? Okay.
Okay.
And we already talked about the housing project plan and that, so we'll move on to letter of ref, MINDS Building Committee. There has been a suggestion and a request to lower the number of members on the MINDS School Building Committee, and as a result of the discussion within their group, there has been a number of individuals who were sitting on that board have sent a letter of resignation, and I could read them off to you.
Why don't we let Paul maybe address it real quick first and then.
Sorry, Paul, it's right.
Because it has, they have to be included in the motion.
Go ahead, sir.
Paul Kendall, Six Rebenaka Road, current chair of the MINDS Building Committee, so yes, I, I sent a letter requesting that the board consider reconstituting the committee in a smaller number. Clearly, we're at a different point in the project now, we're, we're a very large group, we're 18 members, 15 voting members, and given everyone's busy schedule and the kind of mundane or rote nature of our current work, it's been difficult to get a quorum sometimes, and I feel bad chasing people to come on to, you know, to, to do this work, and so I did approach, approach the committee a couple of times and, and ask them about what they wanted to do. It was 100% voluntary, and, you know, what I, what I urged them to do is 100% unapologetically what they wanted to do, what was best for them, with nothing but appreciation for the work that this group's done, we should be incredibly proud of this group. We went through crazy times, unprecedented times through this process, and I can tell you without hesitation that every single building committee member has made an impact on the, on the, on the project, so. So with that, we just request that we, you accept the letters of resignation with our gratitude and, and then reconstitute it with, with a lower number. We're basically, essentially keeping two community members' positions that wanted to stick, stay on, and then either the staff or the required, and I'll use air quotes, because technically nothing's required as far as the members, but all the, the building committee needs to be approved by the MSBA, and you will have to have justification why you don't have the town administrator on, superintendent, principal, MCPo for procurement and things like that. So we're keeping the staff and, and those positions on, and then Ms. Bennett and Mr. Kane wanted to stay on as well, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions for Paul?
No.
We're good with that?
Yep.
Would you like me to read?
We have to do this as a motion.
Okay.
Right, so I move that we accept the resignation from the MINDS School Building Committee of Taylor Van Baschek Bodeo, Nicholas DiGivano, Ed Hart, Kitan Joshi, Christopher Lee, Tim McKay, Dilak Subrahamiyan, and Jenna Lorango, who has left the district.
There, a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of supporting the recommendations?
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero.
And then I move that we, the select board, dissolve the current MINDS School Building Committee that was originally created on April 18th, 2018, and reconstitute the MINDS School Building Committee consisting of 11, 11 members, the members to include Paul Kendall from the School Committee Representative, Yolanda Greve, Select Board Representative, Jim Adams, Superintendent of Schools, why did I miss something?
Michael Herbert.
Michael, Christopher Matthew, Director of Business and Operations, Michael Herbert, Town Manager, John Murray, Director of Facilities, Michael Kyra, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, Claudia Bennett, Community Member, Michael Kane, Community Member, Paul Carpenter, Director of Technology as a non-voting member, and Kate, Kate Aldman, the current Principal of the MINDS Elementary School as a non-voting member.
Except, oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's five zero, so Paul, you have a new committee? Good luck, and I know that'll make it a little bit easier when you schedule your meetings, let's hope. Thank you, and again, to all those who sent their letter of resignation, like Paul said, thank you for all your work and your commitment and sacrifice to get this building built, and you, all your efforts came into, if you wish, and it's a beautiful building, and I know that the children are enjoying it, the bees are also enjoying it, and I drove up.
Wasps, not bees.
The wasps, I'm sorry, wasps, I know, I'm giving bees a bad name.
You are.
I know, I'm sorry.
Can't do that.
Have to be, we have to be ecologically correct. I drove, I drove up there the other day and looked at the fields, they're coming in very nice.
They're getting there.
Listen, I, I, I know, but I have to tell you something, they, they look good, from what was there, they look good, I know there's a lot of work left to be done, but it, it looks good, and I like the railing post fence along the other side of it, it looked very, very nice.
You know, and I, I want to add that I, I was over there today actually for something, and I, the kids on the, that playground is really spectacular, you know, I mean, I, I was at a different angle than I'd been at before to, to really look at it and see kid, see it full, and it's really a spectacular playground, and I did, you know, ask if, if Mrs. Altman thought that the kids missed the grass, and she said maybe a little bit, but they kind of all agreed that, right now, they're doing just fine with the playground, but it, it's a really a spectacular playground, if, even if you don't have kids, they should go over.
Well, funny you should say that. Yeah, playground.
Yeah, I'll push you on the swing.
I actually, we drove, we drove up there on Sunday, and my, my friend were looking at it and also saw the area that was blocked off because of the wasps, and there was at least four families, they were sitting at the picnic tables, they were having like a brunch type of deal, and the kids were playing, and it, great, it was, it was wonderful to see being utilized, you know, even while the school wasn't in session, that was just, it's, it's a focal point now, it's becoming a destination location.
And it, it looked really good in all those news coverage of the bees.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, looked very nice. So again, thank you to your committee for a job well done, and we appreciate that, so good luck to everybody. Okay, next on our agenda, is discuss the boards and committee subcommittee recommendations previously discussed at our June 4th, 2025 Select Board Meeting, and I will turn that over to Makita and Yolanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so it is good to have my fellow subcommittee member with me on this round, as on June 4th, I had to kind of present our ideas on our own. So this evening, we were hoping to get a little bit more specific about our recommendations, and there's one particular recommendation that we wanted to discuss with the board. Just to review, we had, for folks, for the folks at home, earlier this. earlier this year, we had met with our different committees, Select Board Appointed Committees, chairs and, and members to get some recommendations on how we could improve the committee, the committee recruitment and retention process. And we got a lot of really great suggestions. We also met with Sue Robey, who manages that process for, for recruitment and applications and such. And we came up with some key recommendations, which I shared with the board on the fourth. These recommendations include, but aren't necessarily limited to, ensuring that before applicants put applications in, that they should be required to attend at least two meetings of that board or committee that they're interested in, in being a part of, so that they understand what the commitment entails. We wanted to make some quick changes to the application, including allowing people to put their LinkedIn link or upload their CV, just so that we could get a better picture of the, the candidates. That, that, like I said, the, the, the one that we wanted to talk with y'all tonight about was Select Board Liaisons to Committees. So, Yolanda, I'm going to have you jump in here. But the, the thought being, like, like I said in, in June, is that having more of a formal liaison to committees may actually help these committees get, you know, make sure that they know that they're supported by a select board, make sure that there's a connection, if there's an issue, they know exactly who to reach out to. Just making sure that, but I'm like, communication and, in helping these committees to execute what they need to do would be greatly enhanced, I think, with, with specific liaisons. We have a few ideas about how that could work, but Yolanda, why don't you jump in?
Yeah, so one of the things in, again, looking, in talking to the different committees and the members of those committees, and also doing some research of other communities, by having a specific liaison, a select board member for each committee, and then they would be the contact. So you would attend a meeting, you know, either one, a meeting every month or every other month, whatever you feel is, is going to work for you. And ideally, it's a committee that you're somewhat interested in, that if you're there, you're at least discussing and participating in something that you want to help with. But also to help that communication back and forth, right? How do we know how the, how a committee is working? And whether or not they need some assistance with what they're working on? Or how do we say, you know, how do we find out what they're doing? You know, we've, for many years, we've talked about having them all come and report to us. And we've done that a couple of times, where we've invited different committees to come and tell us what they're working on and how things are going. And, and sometimes it's worked, and we've had one or two committees come, and then because it's gotten busy or there's been a lot on our agendas, it's dropped off or, or trying to communicate with them has been different, has been difficult. So our thought was, if we could think about the different committees that we have, and, you know, the ones, the committees that we appoint are the ones that we're looking at. So.
Right.
Open Space and Rec, Upper Charles Trail, Conservation, CPC, Historical, and I don't remember them all.
Counseling on, counseling.
Any, ZBA, any, any of the committees that we appoint, one, one of us is their liaison.
I can tell two off, right off the top of my head.
Affordable Housing.
And the roadway traffic study committee.
Right.
Right.
And I'm on both of them.
Right, you're on both of those, so those are, those are, right, those are good ones. Right, for me, I, I, I'm already, I've already done some with Open Space and Rec, as well as Upper Charles Trail. So those are two for me that I would, that I would continue to do.
Yeah, for me, historical.
Historical.
And, and, you know, I, I think cultural council would be something that I'd be interested in, in liaison with as well. But, you know, we can, like I said, I, the one thing that Yolanda and I did discuss is that, you know, we wanted to make sure that this was something that was manageable for us, but also with the committees as well. Not talking about making every single meeting, but, you know, making sure that whatever cadence you're on, you and the chair understand, like, what meetings you'd attend. And then making sure that you kind of keep your door open, you know, for that chair or the members of those committees to communicate and ask questions, reach out, that sort of thing. Because, you know, we, we all do do a lot, but, you know, we want to make sure that if this is something that folks could do, we don't want to, like, crush folks with, with this as well. So we'd love to get your feedback.
Thoughts and feelings on that?
Yeah.
To me, I think what you, what you both suggested is a great idea. I mean, years ago, we talked about doing something like that. And again, it just, it never came to fruition, why, I don't know, but it's always a good idea to have that. That connection. I think it was ten years ago when I was asked to join the Affordable Housing Trust. And it was, you know, there were some issues going on at the time, and they wanted to make sure things were being done the way they were supposed to be done. And so I'd be happy to get on board. And then when Affordable, the Road Traffic Safety Committee.
Came about.
Came about. You know, Eddie, Ed Berman was, was, he was the sergeant at the time, and he was, he was running the, the program, and he asked me to join, and I, and I, and I did as a liaison.
Right.
So that way, if there was any questions, concerns, and basically, they wanted a, somebody to be able to ask for funding for some of the things that needed to get done, so, yeah. So I was the, I was the dog to have to go and, you know, bite the hand that feeds him. So, and it's, and it's worked out well, and unfortunately, Eddie took the job as the chief in Wayland. And he's, so, you know, unfortunately, by default, I started, I had to take over as, as, as the Chair of the Roadway Traffic Safety Committee. But it's, I think your idea is a great idea, and it's, and it's a sound idea, and it's.
And, and it's actually not that many committees that need.
Right.
Like, I'm looking at the A to H list, and we already have affordable housing covered. Makita's willing to take Ashland Cultural Council. That's CPC, and Conservation, and Council on Aging, and Historical. So that's, I don't know, I have lost count, but it wasn't that many when Makita and I were looking at these.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I, first off, Brandy, Claudia, haven't really heard from y'all during this conversation, so like, if you all could jump in and kind of share your thoughts, that would be awesome.
Eye contact, we're making eye contact.
I'll just, I'll say, like, I think it's a great idea, I think it's good. The, the other thing I would say is that once we take on these committees as liaisons, then we should make sure that we report back to the board in a, like, you know, that, that's part of our process.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the other.
Right, and that could be a standing thing too, right?
Yeah.
Once a month, we all report on the meetings, right, as part of our board reports. And if something comes up, we can then ask to have it put on the agenda.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. And I'd, I'd be happy to take on a couple of committees.
Okay.
I'm, I'm counting twelve, I kind of went through.
Yeah, we'll probably take a couple more, but.
Where did, where did you get the exact list of twelve?
I just, I went to the website and looked at the.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, but it, I think.
Yeah, it doesn't indicate which are ours, so on the, on the, on the, on the second page, on the M to, what is it?
Z.
K to Z, so land stewardship, they don't, land stewardship, open space and rec, roadway traffic safety, stormwater advisory, sustainability, town forest, Upper Charles, and ZBA.
Right. We, we actually, what I was going to suggest, Yolanda, is maybe what we could do is send out a list or a spreadsheet and have folks, you know, kind of sign in, you know, just sign up for what you're interested in, and then at the next meeting, we can, you know.
And if, you know, if two people are interested, then we can discuss it.
We can just discuss it in the next meeting and get it straightened out.
Good idea.
You know, in my years on the school committee, we always had liaisons to different groups. To the schools and to the PAC and the, the PTO. So, you know, in all, each of the schools, Site Council, one of us would sit on the Site Council. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea. Certainly, it, it's, right now, even now, I feel like I don't have a full grasp of, of what's some, what's going on with some of the committees. So, just even hearing, even what other people have to say, it would be.
Awesome.
And I think the spreadsheet is a good thing too, because, like, I need to, I need to go in and look to see what these, these committees meet, and see if I can make those meetings before I commit to being a liaison.
And like I said, like, you know, don't plan on, or don't, you're not, I, I don't think obligating us to attend every meeting. I mean, my, my suggestion would even be like, once quarterly for a lot of them, with any sort of other meetings or telephone calls or emails that you need to do with chairs or, or members. But, you know, it, the point is to make sure that you have a line of communication, you understand what they need assistance with and how we can help them. So, you know, again, and, you know, sometimes, I, you know, for sometimes, you're going to have to meet more frequently. Other times, you will not, but I think maybe just a minimum of once a quarter would get folks started. Just get that line of communication open, you know, it's a thought.
Sounds good to me.
First step is always the hardest.
Exactly, so we owe you a spreadsheet. The other piece of this is that we did, I think we should meet with Sue again to talk through, like, how we can assist with the recruitment materials and, and some of those.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I think we'd like to, I, I think we've talked about this, but maybe not officially, is make it so that on the form, you can only apply for one committee at a time.
Yes.
So that as you're, as you're filling it out, you can't fit, you know, select six, right?
Right.
You then pass those on to all the chairs, and like, who are you really interested in?
Exactly.
So we'd like to do that, and then also work on having a spot for either your LinkedIn, your LinkedIn link, or, or your, your C, you know, your CV.
Yeah.
So that we have a little bit more information from people as we're reviewing them.
Yeah, and even, and what we get from Susan too, it's not very friendly. I, I think we should, I, I, I'm going to someday maybe sit with her and see the, what the backend of that looks like. Because when we looked at, I think it was the scholarships, when we looked at the backend, you could really take it as a spreadsheet and make anything you wanted from it, so. I don't want to make it.
If you're willing to do that, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, with, you know, we definitely want to coordinate with you, so let's, let's do that.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, there might be a spreadsheet floating around that lists all these committees, because, Yolanda, if you remember, you had at one point asked us to rate which the importance regarding.
Right, of committees that we'd want to have, right, that, that was last year, and that might, that probably did.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so, yeah, it won't be too hard to, to create the list or, or reconstitute it from something. And Susan, Susan put her camera on, so maybe she has some.
Oh, hi, Susan.
Some input for us.
Oh, we can't hear you, though, can you open your mic, Sue?
There you go.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, I already have that form, you guys had mentioned it before, that you wanted the LinkedIn or resumes.
Okay.
Do I have the form created? I just haven't had it reviewed by you guys or gone live with it.
Okay, that's awesome.
And also the ability to restrict that they only get to pick one committee at a time?
I didn't put that on there, but we can absolutely build that into the form.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Susan.
We'll circle back with you on that, Susan. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Tying up loose ends very nicely. Okay, next, the twenty twenty-five Boston Regional MPO Municipal Election. Discuss supporting the nomination of Mayor Charlie Siski to this, to this position that would represent Ashland and the Metro West area.
What is this?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
Let the cat out of the bag, she jumped right out of it, go ahead.
Well, it's so funny that this came on, because at our, our last Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting, we were having a discussion about this. So the MPO, I, I don't really, what, Metropolitan?
Planning Organization.
Right, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And they are the ones who, they have this large committee where they review items that go on the tip, which is the Transportation Infrastructure Program, right? So it's federal dollars coming in, state dollars coming in, they have this whole rating. What happens is, and I think it's in the, in our packet, is that every year or every couple of years, there's these different elections. And each, the, the elections have different types of seats. So there's city seats, there's town seats, there's regional seats. There's large city, there's, I don't know, there's a bunch of different ones. So what happens is, right now, they're looking for people, for nominations for the Metro West Region seat. And it's part of the Metro West Regional Collaborative, so the nine cities and towns that make up the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Need me to name them, or are you, okay.
No.
But Framingham, so the MPO seat.
People can Google that.
Yes, the MPO seat has been held by Framingham for a long time. And five years ago, six years ago, when there was a different mayor, actually, let me step back, so Dennis G. M. Betty, who was a Select Board Member in Framingham, had been the representative for a while. When the new, when the first mayor came into Framingham, they pulled Dennis from the seat and put someone else in it. And that was a time when I, we were still very engaged with going to the MPO and making sure our project stayed on board. And we actually, we actually put our name in for Ashland to take the seat. And we had support from Milis and Medway and a couple of other communities. Unfort, and I was willing to do the seat, I, like, it's, anyway. Unfortunately, when you go for the seat, the name for this, on the seat, has to be the highest elected official. So for us at the time, it was Steve Mitchell. So people saw Ashland, Steve Mitchell, even though we knew that I was going to be the designee. So people didn't know Steve, because he wasn't as involved in some of the regional stuff. And for Framingham, the designee was the mayor, who at the time was Yvonne Spicer. And again, people were like, you know, we're all excited, because here it was Framingham's first mayor. It's very political. But after some review, Framingham kept the seat. And finally, Dennis got put back in as the designee for Framingham. So he's been treating the commu, the rest of the committees and the communities very well. He understands the communities. So the, the only reason I would be hesitant about voting this today is I've heard that NADIC might be going for the seat as well. So.
So what's the, what's the timeline on this?
They have to have their nominations in by October sixth, I believe. So we, we do have another meeting that we could.
When do they, okay, so nominations by October sixth?
Nominations by the sixth, and then the actual vote happens at the MA, it's, it's an MA, it's tied to MAPC. So the actual vote is happening at their Fall Council Meeting on October twenty-ninth.
I mean, can, can we wait until we get the nominees in, or, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I, I recommend we wait to vote this until we hear what's going on with NADIC. Now, NADIC has said that if it's going to continue to be Dennis as Framingham's designee, they might support that, but they haven't decided yet. So. And if you have more questions on this, we can talk, talk offline. Like I said, I mean, I think Framingham and Dennis have been doing well.
October sixth was the.
Yeah, October sixth is.
October sixth.
Like I said, Framingham and Dennis have been doing well, and I'm sure they're reaching out to the surrounding communities, because they want to keep the seat, and they've probably heard there's some potential for people.
So when you say they've been doing well, I mean, I don't want to be, you know, crass, but what have they done for us?
Well, we haven't had, Ashland hasn't had anything new added to the tip since our Route one twenty-six project. But Dennis, when he was there, advocated for us, he helped keep us on la, you know, moving forward, and, and he's always been a good advocate. He's helped us when there's been issues with Route one twenty-six. And that's the only thing that Ashland has had on the tip. We, we've talked about doing some other things on the tip, but we haven't gotten there yet. Because you have to have a certain amount of, of engineering done before you can apply for the tip.
Got it.
And if you ever want a conversation about what the tip is and how the process is, let me know, we'll get drinks and I'll.
I would like to know that.
Let me know, let me know. So I'd like to hold off on this, if you guys don't mind. And then let me can finish my reconnaissance and see what happens, and then.
Okay.
We can go from there.
All right. Sounds good.
And I will be attending the meeting on October twenty-eighth, so whatever we decide, I would then vote for Ashland.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification, that's. Greatly appreciated, okay. Moving right along, we have a consent agenda. So if you've all read that consent agenda, I will accept a motion to accept.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five zero, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we will go to, uh, Town Manager's Report. FY26 Budget Update.
Sure, thank you sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so just a couple of, um, just, uh, small updates regarding FY26. We just, Stephanie and Cindy have made a couple of changes just operationally. You know, each month, um, Stephanie would send out to department, uh, department heads like a, a copy of their budget, their year-to-date budget to make sure that it was, you know, make sure everybody aware, was aware of what they had and within their budget. And so, you know, one of the things that we're doing now is we're changing things up and we're having, actually, we're having the department head sign it and actually return it back to Stephanie. So they're acknowledging, they're acknowledging that they have received it, not just that they have been sent that. So, um, not that we've ever had any kind of issues with, um, you know, overruns or any kind of, anything like that. But it's just another, another method of, uh, just accountability and, um, I think, you know, transparency to a certain extent. One question I did wanna ask you is that we, um, what we have done is that quarterly, we provide like a, just a, an update, uh, a budget to actual update, uh, for the fiscal year, uh, and that's on the website typically. Would you like me to send that to you, you know, indirectly or just send you, uh, like a link to the website when it gets posted? You know, is there a particular preference that?
I'd be happy with a link.
A link is fine.
Okay, um, the, the last thing related to this is that we do have a, um, ratings call with S and P on Monday. So that will be interesting. So that's where they, you know, take a look at our bond rating, look at, uh, any of the changes that have happened within the last year and, um, and, you know, basically make a determination about our creditworthiness.
Is that just one meeting or is that a series? Like what's the process, just so folks are familiar with how that works?
Yeah, it's just, it, it's, it's really one meeting. Typically, it's a phone call. Occasionally, if they haven't, uh, done it in a while, they'll come, they'll actually come out, come out to the town. And, um, you know, they, they look at basically the audited statements from, you know, the last couple of fiscal years, look at our performance. Look at any, you know, growth trends that are happening, any, any kind of development, um, that is, that has happened recently or that's on the horizon, any kind of budgetary pressures that we, that we might have. Any kind of changes in our policies or changes in our personnel. So obviously, you know, that's going to come up, um, with this, you know, with this round of calls. And another thing that's gonna come up is, is the deficit. This will be, you know, the second year in a row where we've had a pretty sizable deficit that we've had to manage. So, um, it'll be an interesting call. And, uh, hopefully we'll come out still with a triple A, um, triple A rating and, um, yeah. That, uh, we, we should know, typically we know, um, probably by the end of the week what our rating, rating's gonna be. So what they do is they'll take in the analysts and everything, they'll take in all the information, um, you know, start reviewing and, and analyze it. And then what they do is they take it to what's called the Credit Committee at S and P, um, which reviews it and makes the final determination.
Good, and that should be all done within a week on?
Usually they can, they turn it around within a week. What they'll do is they'll send us a draft, um, two hours before it goes live and just say if there's any, you know, you've got two hours to review this and if there's any kind of mistakes or, you know, you've got that much time to kinda basically let them know, like there's a typo, like a major typo here, you know, material typos. So it can be a little, a little hectic. It's, uh, it's been interesting, you know, if you'd asked me, uh, you know, a few months ago if Dawn, our Assessor, would be the longest-tenured department head, the finance team, I would've said, whatever. But, um, yeah, it's just, um, you know, Cindy's new in her role. Obviously, she's been in town for a while. Stephanie's new in her role. She's been in town for a while. So it's been a great experience, um, um, tough experience for, for everybody and, uh, and a learning experience.
Now, do they usually wait to get the results from the S and P, um, with respect to the, uh, you know, the, the rating aspect of it? When they, before they go looking for, uh, lower rates? So hopefully, once you get that, they can start looking for better bond ratings and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, we're at the top right now, so, um, hopefully we'll maintain that.
And that helps us down the long road for short-term loans.
Yeah, that's actually a really, a really good point I should make. I, I just sometimes assume everybody realizes this. You know, obviously, the higher our credit rating, the better rates we get when we go out to borrow. A few basis points can make a big difference when you're talking about tens of millions of dollars. So that's FY26 Budget Update. Um, there, uh, were a couple of requests, uh, from the last meeting or in between the last meeting and this meeting, uh, regarding West Nile and just kind of a status update. So, um, the state was hesitant to give us the exact location of where, um, some of the positive mosquito examples were. But, um, we were able to, uh, get them to let us know that it was more towards the South Barrow Line, where they found that, where those traps were. And, uh, so since that time, also just in the last couple of days, there have been, there's been actual confirmed, two confirmed cases of West Nile virus in humans. One was in Middlesex County. The latest one, which happened today, was in Essex County. Middlesex County, obviously Ashland is in. Middlesex County is also very, very large, you know, stretches from the northern border to Rhode Island. That, and then, uh, finally, an update on the paving projects. So with the completion of the 135 project, so we're done for this season, um, the only thing we have left to do is crack sealing. But the past season, we were able to do six streets, uh, so Route 135, Olive Street, Spring Street, South Street, House Street and Spiglasse Hill. We're, we've also been, um, undergoing a pavement management plan, uh, which, uh, we should be getting the draft report of pretty soon, which will help inform paving projects in the future. And, um.
The paving, the paving plan, um, does that look forward like a certain period of time? Is it like a five-year plan or is it like more like the upcoming year? How does, how is it gonna be structured?
It's typically more of a five-year plan. And it's a, where the bulk of the work goes in is the assessment of the current pavement. So, I don't know, I think we actually put something in the newsletter not too long ago. I mean, you might've seen these funky vehicles in town that they actually, you know, they're equipped with all these sensors. These vehicles drive over and that's how they measure the condition of the pavement, is by actually driving it.
I have a question about Fruit Street and the work that, it's gas work that's being done on Fruit Street?
Yes.
Do we require them to redo the whole road if they make a huge mess of it? Cause Fruit Street right now.
Oh, it's.
Is a mess.
Yes.
And they've, they've, you know, they've done the work and they've paved it over, but it's still.
Question.
Yeah, that's you.
It's just not.
I would agree, it's not.
And, you know, and they've done, you know, some pa, some along the side and like.
It's awful.
It's made some of the side, the side, sidewalk a little bit smaller.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's very, very rare that we have the opportunity to make them do curb to curb. But I would agree, Fruit Street, that kinda like patchwork.
It's awful. It's not even well patched. I mean, you can patch something well, right?
When people drive over it, they realize that this could be, and they're slowing down. But that's, that's the only good thing about it, but that's not the reason why.
It's almost as if this is just like the first step and then they're gonna fix it. That, that's how bad it is. It's just like, they just did this because, you know, they gotta fill in the, yeah, it's awful.
If there's any way we can, I mean, and I know some of it's, some of the patchwork that we do, you know, with the spraying and stuff like that. But I was riding on that, on, on Fruit Street the other day and it was, it was.
It's a rough go.
It was not safe, you know, if you're.
Especially now with schools in session and the buses that come along and kids that walk.
There's a lot of traffic on that road and it's just, I don't think they're done yet. I think they're still, cause it was, it was locked off part of today.
Yeah.
Yeah, the metal thing and they're still blocking the road part of the days because they're still doing some work. But if we can encourage them to do better, yeah, really.
I know.
They said they were gonna be done within that month and then, yeah, dragged out to the entire summer.
It's been.
Almost the entire summer.
I would say two months. It's been July and August.
July and August.
Maybe it was June, but I wasn't here, but it was July and August, definitely.
Cause kids get out late June anyway, so, yeah.
Okay, if we can get an update or see what we can have them do.
Yeah, well, how about just get it fixed? That'd be good. That'd be better. And then one last thing that's not on the agenda, just, uh, you might've, have seen something about this, but, um, the Metro West Chamber of Commerce is actually hosting, uh, MBTA General Manager Phil Ng tomorrow, um, at 8:30. I think it's at the Verb, Verb in Natick. So if, um, you know, you, you have some time and that's, uh, something that interests you, um, I believe, um, I believe the tickets, uh, are either 30 or 40. But, um, opportunity to hear the general manager, who I've heard good things about, um, you know, come in and, you know, talk about basically the vision for, um, for transportation.
There'll be a meal, there'll be coffee and a meal and, you know, they have to rent the space and.
Meet and greet, yeah. Uh, and that's, that is what I had.
Can I ask a question before we move off of Town Manager Reports? Water restrictions.
Yeah, I, I, that was, I was gonna ask you about that.
I saw, we're at stage level two.
Like, what does that mean?
Um, and, you know, what is the anticipated, because I know, I think technically water restrictions are until a certain point in time, but how does that work?
Right. I'm actually surprised we weren't asked to vote the extension of that.
Yeah, um, let me get some more information on like the runway.
But technically, we shouldn't have any restrictions right now because we didn't vote to give you the, unless we did it a long time ago to say anytime it happens, but I don't remember that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember that, yeah.
Like if it's a, an emergency or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, like.
Cause I was surprised to then see, today I saw stage two.
Yeah.
On a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was on 135.
And it also ends.
It was coming down the hill of Main Street.
Downtown too, yeah.
Yeah, it also ends, um, at some point in September too.
Yeah.
And I don't have that date emblazoned, uh.
But right now, we're, we're, we're considering stage, we're considering it in stage two. And that's because the wa, the, the, the reason, so the different stages relate to the level of the water at the reservoir. And it's like inches within each other. Between, I think, two and three. So we must've jumped, we must've lost a lot from stage one to stage two. Yeah. Are we anticipating having to go to stage three?
That's, yeah.
Uh, not that I've been made aware of.
Okay. And can we remind people what it means with stage two?
Yep.
We can definitely put that out there.
No washing cars.
Yeah.
Well, it's no, I mean, stage one, stage one is no washing cars, no outdoor watering unless you have food. Stage two is, I don't even know what those other restrictions are.
Yeah, that, that goes back to like, what does that actually mean?
So let's, let's, as, and maybe in your newsletter this year, this week, you could let people know what that means and why.
Yeah, why is important.
Considering we had, what was it, a week ago, we had rain almost all day.
That's, that's where I think people are gonna be like, what? Yeah, you know, like.
It wasn't enough to.
I, I, yeah, I, I, I understand, but like, you know, I think there may be some confusion around, like, how this works.
That's a good point.
Michael pulled something up for us.
Yeah, I just, I just went, the, the stage two restriction, so, um, unattended watering, obviously is prohibited. Car washing prohibited, uh, using municipally-supplied water, I should say, uh, washing of structures. The infamous filling and topping off of swimming pools, rub. And then handheld, uh, water using municipally-supplied water is prohibited.
And I guess that's the hard part, right? Is that there are people who you think should be on town water that are not.
They have well water.
That have their own wells, so. Don't yell at your neighbor until you're sure.
That's actually a really important point, Yolanda, you know, I mean, people don't know and shouldn't make assumptions, you know, about what their neighbors are doing around this.
There are, there are a lot of neighbors right now, a lot of folks in, in the area that, uh, made up that, had signs, well water in use.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know? Now, they could have town water and put well water in use.
All, all I'm gonna say.
I'm just saying.
All I'm gonna say, all I'm gonna say is that, you know, we respect our, our, our homeowners as adults and we, now that they are informed, we trust them to do the right thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That, yes, so.
No one waters on Mondays.
That's right.
I mean, Keita's going, really?
Drive around, you can look. Okay, thank you. Uh, Board Reports.
Okay, a couple of things, let's see. So for the Comprehensive Plan, we've had two forums completed, not highly attended, but some good questions and input from, at both of those. Uh, there are two more to go, one tomorrow night, uh, Thursday the 4th at 7 o'clock and Monday the 8th at 8 o'clock. Uh, thank you to Brandy for sending out not one, but two notifications, uh, because of a mix-up that I had. Uh, but also thank you to Michael Kyra, who sent one out to the schools. So anyone who's on the school lists also received that, which was great to see, so, um, that was good to see. Uh, I attended a meeting in prep for the new year for the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Our first meeting is the 25th of September at 8 o'clock in the morning. Some upcoming things, tomorrow is the first senior breakfast of the year at the Ashland Senior Center. Uh, I think there's a slight change, instead of nine, I think that's serving at 9:30, but if you're there at nine, that's fine too. And then two events coming up, we have on the 13th of September, we have both the Kitty Fenwell Car Show and the Hop Ash, the Hap, yeah, Hop Ash Porch Fest.
Say that fast three times.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, so yeah, two fun events on that, on that day, so you can do. Is it Ash Hop? Ash Hop? All I know is Ashland and Hopkinton working together for a musical festival on porches.
There you go.
And then the summer concerts, the summer, um, the classical music event, I think, is this Saturday.
I think it was the 13th.
Is it the 13th as well?
Can we double check that?
Okay, let's double check that. Anyway, the music festival, okay. Um, and congratulations to everyone who started school. I think it's, except for what happened at Mendez. My understanding is things went pretty smoothly. Um, so I hope everyone has a good year and that's all I got.
Thank you, Yolanda. Makita.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have been, uh, traveling quite a bit, but I did manage to participate in some Ashland Day preparations, attended the, the last meeting and have been running around trying to get quotes and pricing for various. Farming. The petting zoo. To be clear, the petting zoo. Petting zoo, sound equipment, all this stuff. Very happy to volunteer, uh, to be able to do stuff, even though I wasn't, uh, I've been in and out of town for the past couple of weeks. I too want to, uh, echo my colleagues' congratulations to all the folks who have started school. And I, and I think we can say that everyone did start school successfully, even, uh, even in light of the WASP attack that occurred at Mendez. It was actually wonderful to see, uh, our community actually come together and, and help kids and get, get them through it. A great coordinated effort. Um, so I congratulate and thank those folks too. That's all I have.
Thank you, Makita. Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, I too have been very busy with, uh, little Ashland Day activities. It is certainly, uh, you know, it, it's a big job. So in any case, looking forward to October 4th and, um, some good weather and a great day for, to celebrate our community. Um, I did attend the, um, Com- Comprehensive Plan Session last evening. It was very good. Uh, I wondered, how many people did you have in the room?
We had three people in the room, all people from the Comprehensive Plan.
Oh, okay, all right, well.
It was actually good because Robert is there and she takes notes. It was actually good because Roberta's there and she takes notes, and then I give Kate the computer so that she can admit people.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm, I'm presenting from the podium with the PowerPoint, so if I had to do that and admit people at some time. Oh, sorry, it's my fault. Yeah, I think I was going to talk again. Thank you, Mackie. Yeah, I don't know, I think we had a good number, though. Actually, Roberta, do you remember how many people were on? Yeah, via Zoom, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, I was on Zoom, so, and, uh, it was, yeah. So thank you very much for doing that. And, you know, it's good stuff, it's been a lot of hard work and appreciate really what you and Brandy have done, so thank you.
Ms. Brandy.
So we've been busy with Ashland Day. That's, that, that is, that is the, the general thought.
The theme.
That's the theme. I did want to give a very specific shout-out to a lot of people that have been helping us on the town side. Cindy Sinca, our finance director, Stephanie, our accountant, Diane, who's been depositing checks and, you know, helping us keep everything in track, you know, because it's, it's, it's a lot. Today, we, we met with folks from DPWs, so Doug Small and Kevin Langmire. Kevin is like, oh, just.
Knowledge.
He's, he's awesome, so, and. He had several pictures, one map specifically that he was moving things around with.
Put it on the screen?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's his new toy, he loves that.
So, you know, he was, he was great. And we had Chief Roby and Deputy Chief. No, 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 Lynn Marhan there, and Officer Manny Toscano from police, and, and Raj Gupta from the Department, the Health Department. And it, you know, the, it's a, it's a, it's an amazing group. So I just wanted to just give a shout-out to, to everyone who has offered to, to help and, and helped us a lot because it does take a village, so. So we're meeting again on Sunday for another next, next round of, of Ashland Day stuff. I'll have to send out an email, that'll be tomorrow's activity. I did want to remind our group, because I've lost track of things, that this Saturday, the sixth, we are scheduled to be at the farmer's market for office hours.
I have that, I have that made me think.
Ah, so I did ask Jordan to put together a flower, a fly, a flower, a flyer. Can you tell, can you tell I'm dying?
And it's only nine o'clock.
I know, I know. So Jordan, I, I asked her to put together a flyer for us and put it in the newsletter, so we'll have, we'll have that in the newsletter. And then I've also, like, we're kind of expanding the table a little bit, too, and including like folks from, from Ashland Day to, to join us, too, so we should have a good, a good group, so.
And, and have you removed us from October 4th at the farmer's market?
Yes, I have, actually.
Good, thank you.
So we are.
So what are our dates again?
So it's this Saturday, September 6th, and then we are doing the last market of the season on Saturday, October 18th.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you to Steve and, and Jean over at the farmer's market for working with us and finagling the community tent stuff, so. And I think that is everything, I think. And just, and, and I just did want to also give a shout-out to Yolanda for doing these comprehensive plan forums. It's a lot of work and, and, I mean, the whole project's a lot of work, but this particularly is, is, is.
I, I do have to give a shout-out to Austin from the consultants because he gave me individual JPGs of every page. So when I created the PowerPoint, I learned how to do some PowerPoint stuff that I'd never done before. So when I created them, I could just like drag and drop the pictures into the PowerPoints from the JPGs. So that was very helpful. They are going to get changed, the, some of the beginning stuff is going to be different for the next two forums, so I'm like, let's change it up a little bit, so.
And I think we have our like last, I think, our last like working session as a committee this month?
I would think we might need two. I mean, I think we're done with the consultant as of the 18th of September. So I think there's still going to be, have to be discussion about the implementation process. That's the only thing.
Good to have the, the goal line in sight.
Yep.
See you in the late at the end of the tunnel, as long as it's not the train coming in the hour of preparation. Okay, are you all set now?
I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to send out an acknowledgement to all the folks who put on a, a great event last Friday night. Ashland After Dark was a great program.
Oh, yeah.
It was a wonderful event, and the seat, the seat of downtown is vibrant as it was, and seeing kids playing hopscotch and, and, and all these other little games along, along the sidewalk was, it was, it was really awesome.
Wait, was that last week or two weeks? No, it was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
I was going to say, it wasn't Labor Day.
But we didn't have a meeting, but we didn't.
Oh, yeah, we haven't had a meeting since, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was a great event, I was, I was there, I thought that was before. I just don't.
You guys were all there.
Space-time has been a challenge.
But it was fun, but.
It was fabulous.
It was a great night, it was a great night.
So I just wanted to say kudos to all those folks who put it together, because again, it's, takes a lot of effort and a lot of work, and they should be acknowledged, so thank you again. We're approaching the end of our summer corn, some corn sales, so this Saturday, September 7th, will be the last time that we'll be selling corn for the, for the season. So get your orders in early, because the corn has been delicious this year, so.
We had some on Saturday, it was very good.
Yep, and I don't have to say see you at the farmer's market, because that's all done. And just again, a reminder, and the only reason why I want it really emphasizes that school's back in session. There's been a couple of incidences already where people just don't really care how fast they drive when they go through a school zone. I was privy to, to observe this white Tulsa, and I wish I could get, have gotten the plate number.
You mean a Tesla?
I mean a Tesla.
Okay.
Flying through a school zone and nearly hitting the school, school crossing guy.
Uh-oh.
That was out there having traffic stopped and having the kids cross the street. And this was in front of the Warren School. Well, that person who drives that car, shame on you, really shame on you, because you almost caused an accident and these, one young lady started to scream, she thought she was going to get hit.
Oh, my gosh.
That's how bad it was. So I, I offer this, that just please remember what time of year it is, kids, kids are going to school, they're walking to school. You may be late for work, but keep your mind on the road. Keep your mind on the road, you know? It's, it's, it's important to do that. So with that, I've been blessed, having been married to my best friend for 44 years tomorrow. And I just want to wish her a happy anniversary.
Congratulations.
How she put up with me for 44 years, I have no idea how she did that. Okay, the peanut gallery, I know you folks can't hear anything in the background, but no, I didn't meet her in a rumble seat, no, I did not. So with that.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Good night, everybody, and have a great weekend.